We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting February 6th order at 5:00. I do need to announce that we will be going into executive session at the end of the meeting pursuant to KRS 61.8101B, which is deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real properties by public agency where publicity would be likely to affect the value of the property. So it will be done at the end of the meeting. Okay, first order of business, have I had a chance to just review the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd? If there's no corrections or additions, that's what approved by unanimous consent.
I have a suggested correction, Mayor. Victims and their families instead of victims injured.
Yeah, that's in the second paragraph.
Yes.
And then also later on, there was some discussion about the sign ordinance. I think this is reversed. Another category addressed in amendments is exterior electronic signage and it's actually an interior electronic signage. And then the following sentence should read, verbiage used as the same for exterior electronic, not interior.
Okay.
So this reversed, those two words are reversed.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments as amended.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Williams. Do they have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Doherty. Any other discussion? Approve the motion, amendments as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, make motion carry. Also received a copy of the minutes from the street and solid waste from January 22nd and the recreation from January 25th. Is there any, I don't think we have to approve those. We just have to, do we have discussion on those two meetings? I know we had discussion on the street and solid waste last time. Is there any more discussion on that? Alright, then we'll go on to ordinances. First reading, I'll turn that over to Tim Butler on the.
Mayor, we need someone to introduce that ordinance and ask that it be read at least in summary.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2018-03, Chapter 98 and assigned regulations and have it be read in the summary before.
Okay.
Yes, summary of ordinance B 2018-03, signed regulations and ordinance amending and adopting as amended in its entirety and ordinance relating to Chapter 98, sign regulations of the City of Barstown Code of Ordinance. This ordinance would amend Section 9805 definitions as follows, to add definitions of campus, campus directional sign and campus master sign plan and open slash closed window sign. To amend the definition of window sign interior to clarify sign types not considered window signs or temporary. To amend the definition of sign administrator to clarify that the mayor of Barstown designates a sign administrator. To amend Section 9806B2, computation of area of multi-face signs to clarify how back-to-back signs are treated. Amend Section 9806B3 to strike is equal to the elevation of the normal grade at the base of the sign in the deletion to clarify and applying to calculations of sign height. To amend Sections 9807F to add, quote, changeable copy and internally illuminated signs are not considered interior signs, end quote. Amend Section 9810E to clarify and correct the reference to Section 9811CB4. Amend Section 9811B2 to strike, quote, interiorly, end quote and add, quote, internally, end quote as related to signs internally illuminated. Amend Section 9811 signs requiring permits subsections CBII or two, 1AI, also C subsection CBII1BI, subsection CBII1CI and Section CBII1DI to add the following language, quote, freestanding signs may have two faces provided that the two faces are either parallel to each other or at an angle not greater than 60 degrees. Add Section 9811CBII9, quote, changeable copy window signs, end quote, which provides requirements for those signs so defined limiting the type of display and its ability to distract the motoring public. Add Section 9811CBII10, quote, open slash closed window signs, end quote, to provide requirements and restrictions for signs so defined. Add Section 9811CBII11, campus signs to provide for signage to be permitted by way of a campus master signage plan. This section provides the process of submitting a master sign plan and the criteria under which a master sign plan is evaluated and approved. Amend Section 9811 subsection CBII1CIIC and CBII1DIIC to strike, quote, 70, end quote and add, quote, 100, end quote, square feet as allowed maximum sign size. Amend Section 9811CBII5, quote, landmark signs provided, end quote, to add subsection C, which, quote, such signs shall be a substitute for or in lieu of one permitted sign for the principal use, end quote. This ordinance will also re-adopt in full Section 98 signs of the Barstown Code of Ordinance as amended. This summary is certified by me, Tim Butler, City Attorney.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
And you don't need a vote on that, Mayor, unless they want to take a vote.
Just a first reading. This is just the ordained changes that we discussed at the last meeting that primarily is identifying the I-2 zoned properties that are 50 acres or more, which are basically the distilleries. A lot of their needs have changed since distilleries have become destinations and hospitality besides just their manufacturing. As we discussed in our last meeting, a lot of this has to do with safety, making sure that their guests can travel within their tours safely and also that their regular business can get in and out of those identified entrances in safe manner. Then also the other minor changes were to the interior lit signs that are permitted, just giving them the same requirement as far as their changeable copy has to be static for one minute or more and not be a safety distraction in terms of, you know, having starburst or a galloping pony that's going to take your eye off the road for three or four seconds trying to follow it. So running in the back of somebody's Arby's, something like that, which we've got that kind of corrected now. We don't want to change that. But that's really the premise behind this. So this is as a first reading and we'll go for a second reading at the next council meeting. The big thing was to identify a campus and a master sign plan that can be submitted for those campuses of 50 acres or more and I-2 zoning. Okay, then we have a second reading of ordinance B 2018-02, Chapter 53 wastewater.
And that's ready to read if you'd like me.
Okay, go ahead.
Ordinance number 2018-02, an ordinance amending and adopted as amending and ordinance related to Chapter 53 wastewater of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinance. As the City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby deign as follows the amendments to be made by Chap- to, quote, or to add, Chapter 53 wastewater, Section 53024 prohibited discharges B, 53066 restricted discharges subsection J, 53121 debt service depreciation and minimum usage charge and 53.123 industrial OM and R charge subsection A of the City of Barstown's municipal code as follows. 53024 prohibited discharges B, any waters or waste having a pH lower than strike 5.5 add 6.0 or higher than strike 10 add 9 or having any other corrosive property capable of causing damage or hazard to structures, equipment or personnel of the POTW. Subsection D, solid or viscous substances in quantities or of such size capable of causing obstruction to the flow in sewers or other interferences with the proper operation of the wastewater facilities i.e. wood, glass, ashes, sand, cinders, unshredded garbage, paper products such as cups, dishes, napkins and milk containers. Add wipes of any kind including those labeled as flushable etc., end addition. 53066 restricted discharges subsection J, the following limitations are established for characteristics of any wastewater to be discharged into the municipal sewer system subject to any compliance schedule as established in the industrial wastewater discharge permit. Strike, all significant industrial users must comply with these limitations where they are more stringent than applicable state and/or federal regulations subject to any compliance schedule as established in the industrial wastewater discharge permit in strike. All significant industrial users must comply with the limitations where they are more stringent than applicable state or federal regulations. The following are changes to, first, the parameter, second, to the maximum daily concentration. Chromium total strike 2.77 add 1.71. Cyanide amenable strike 0.16 add 0.23. Strike iron strike 25.0. Molly denim strike 0.57 add 1.49. Nickel strike 2.89 add 1.13. Selenium strike 0.14 add 0.08. Zinc strike 2.61 add 1.48. Under Section 53.121 debt service depreciation and minimum usage charge subsection A, uses of the sewer system shall be assessed a monthly debt service charge per user and a debt service charge for flow. All flow charges shall be based on water meter readings add a period. Strike, except for industrial users having approved flow measuring and recording devices installed in controlled manholes, end strike. Subsection B, add, high volume industrial users may request approval for flow measuring and recording devices installed in controlled manholes in addition. Those industrial users shall be assessed flow charges on the basis of measured wastewater flow. Add metering devices, their location, calibration, etc. must be approved by the city in accordance with the industrial user permit requirements and conditions of this ordinance. Approval is made on a case-by-case basis that meet at least one of the criteria listed below. The city may require sewer flow measuring device in instances described in A or C. Subsection A, industrial, this is all still adding, industrial user does not use potable water in its process, thus discharges more water into the sewer system than it purchases. B, the industrial user uses over 1 million gallons of potable water per month but discharges less than 50% of the water to the sanitary sewer system. C, the industrial user has a large permitted outdoor sewer treatment facilities that allow stormwater to enter the sewer system thus discharging more volume of water to the sewer system than it purchases. Add a C for subsection C. 53.123 industrial O and M charge, the following changes are under the, we are formatting the sewer industrial discharge surcharge table as follows, industrial customer wastewater loading surcharge rates and no surcharge rate will be charged for wastewater with a strength less than 250 milligrams per liter BOD, 250 milligrams per liter TSS and 20 milligrams per liter ammonia/nitrogen. Discharge, strike minimum charge and surcharge rate. BOD loading per pound, strike if less than 700 milligrams per liter, strike 0.1834 per pound. If, strike 700, add 250 to 1400 milligrams per liter, strike 0.2751 add 0.31 dollars per pound. If more than 1500 milligrams per liter, strike 0.3668 add 0.62 dollars per pound. TSS loading per pound, strike if less than 700 milligrams per liter, strike 0.2583 per pound. If, strike 700, add 250 to 1400 milligrams per liter, strike 0.3875 add 0.28 dollars per pound. If more than 1400 milligrams per liter, strike 0.5166 add 0.56 dollars per pound. Ammonia loading, strike if less than 700 milligrams per liter, strike 0.9518 per pound. If, strike 700, add 20 to, strike 1400, add 1400, strike 1.4227 add 0.97 dollars per pound. If more than, strike 1400, 140 milligrams per liter, strike 1.9036 add 1.94 cents per pound. All ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be, take effect and be in full force immediately on its passage. Approval and publications required by law.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Then we need a motion then for the second reading to approve ordinance number 2018-02. And then if we have a motion, a second, there's some discussion. Motion by Counselor Butler, I have a second.
Second.
Second, with Counselor Shekels. Any discussion? I know there's some people in the audience that are interested and we'll have, I guess Jessica and I'll probably try to speak to this. The background here, at least I'll speak to the business side of things and Jessica can speak to the technical and the more scientific side of it, if you would excuse me on that part of it. We haven't amended any of these charges or any of these weights and measurements for years and years and years. And the nature of our treatment has really changed with the growth of a lot of industry here in Barstown in the last 10 years. It's probably been longer than that since Jessica says we've never amended these. Is that correct?
A few of the frameworks have been a little, it's been a while.
So, you know, our costs, we've been absorbing these costs for a number of years, you know, as our chemicals for treatment arise, as our cost for some of the vendors that we use to come in and do measurements for us like hall engineering and our cost of just labor, you know, our pension costs are going to go up 50% this year for those people working in this field of work here. So, and the impact on our system is more significant now. So that's sort of the business side of things. We just can't continue to ignore these rising costs without making some changes and the impact on our system. So then there's some state regulations that I'll let Jessica speak to that we are required to show proof that we can handle the type of waste that are coming into our plants and that we can handle them in a manner that meets their guidelines. So a lot of this is dictated on the state level.
Thank you. You did a pretty good job of explaining that, Mayor. Again, a lot of this was just, we haven't evaluated the way our loading systems were calculated in a few years and the calculations at the plant, what we're treating, what we can treat and evaluating those local limits for each facility and as well as what it's actually costing us to treat certain parameters per pound. So we've kind of gone through that process and looking at making some tweaks to make that more, where we can handle that and continue to be compliant with the regulations and permits that we, the City of Barstown, has to meet from an EPA and Division of Water standpoint. And some of the changes to the surcharge loading were changed, the way they were set up, also to provide some incentive for industry and business to have, who have good pre-treatment programs, to not pay surcharge on waste streams that were equivalent in strength to residential waste. So I wanted to create that parameter in there without starting a surcharging from zero. So I think that should be a benefit to industry as well, knowing that some other items have to be tightened up just from a practical standpoint for what we can treat and how we can treat it and how our infrastructure handles those parameters. So that's just a little bit of a background.
And you say that in some of your analysis that if some of the industries can be in compliance, they'll actually see a reduction in their.
Yes, yes.
Charge. So it's not going to be just a cost of war increase for our industrial users.
Correct.
Part of this methodology is going to achieve a reduction in their rates. Now, obviously, if they have a, we get slammed, you know, with a discharge or something, then that's an unexpected thing. That's where we have to have some of these surcharges, but that's part of the cost to do a business. So, any other discussion, any questions of Jessica? I think Councilman Doherty wants to accuse himself.
Part abstaining, abstain, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, this is a second. I'll call for all those in favor, starting with Councilman Copeland.
Aye.
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 Okay, and Councilman Kelly is not here and the Director of City, Councilman Bell is abstained. Okay, thank you. Tim, I'm going to let you take over then. We've got HRB and planning and zoning recommendations.
Yes, Mayor, this, just so that you all remember, I know I've mentioned this once before, and Councilman Copeland and Councilman Williams may recall that back probably mid to late 2016, prior council adopted a procedure that is provided for in KRS 100.2111, which is called alternative regulation for zoning map amendment. And basically all that does is it allows zoning map amendments, or rezonings, what most people would call rezoning, to go into effect without the city council effectively or automatically taking it up. And the provisions of that law actually say that a planning commission's recommendation related proposed amendment shall become final and the map amendment shall be automatically implemented subject to the provisions of KRS 1032347, which is an appeal. All is set forth in the planning commission's recommendations unless, within 21 days of the final action of the planning commission, A, an agreed person files a written request with the planning commission that the final decision shall be made with the, by the appropriate legislative body or fiscal court, or B, the appropriate legislative body or fiscal court, which in this case legislative body is us, the Barstown City Council, shall decide to take the, decide the map amendment. In other words, if we want to tell the planning commission, we're going to decide this matter, we can do that. And then it would take a majority of the entire legislative body, and that would be, in our case, it would take four votes, even if, like council, in this case, Councilman Kelly is not here, it would take the four of the remaining of you all to override. It's what's called a supermajority, not just a simple majority of the members present, but it takes a majority of the entire legislative body. What this does is it gives deference to the planning commission. But the important thing to remind you all is, is that these, and this is on, because we're, it's a working session as much as anything, that you all can decide if you want to have Ms. Riley as city clerk to notify the planning commission that you want to decide one or all of these matters. If you don't want to take these up, and the way it was decided at prior council was one person can decide, one councilman can say, I want to take this up and have the whole council decide it. But if you all want to take any one of these up and consider it, then it would be treated as it was prior. We would take it up and make a, take a vote and decide these matters. If you don't want to take it up, if you have read the materials and say, yep, I agree with the planning commission's recommendation, you can just leave it as is and it becomes passed by operation of law. Why that's kind of important to us is, is that it alleviates the requirement of us to take up an ordinance on first reading. And if you remember, some of the, selfishly, we had one legal description out on 245 that was four pages long. You know, if you can avoid those, I'd vote for that. But, you know, you don't, that way you wouldn't have to take it up, you wouldn't have to publish an ordinance, it's a cost savings measure. And for the public, for the applicants, it's a time savings. If with, after 21 days it's not taken up, it's passed by operation of law and then they get their rezoning quicker that way. So the way this will probably come up from this point on, it won't necessarily be on your, your agenda, there will be an email sent out, I've already talked to Ms. Riley about that, there'll be an email sent out to you all saying, do you, do you want to take one of these up? It won't be a reply all, it'll be a, you know, let her know. It'll be put on the agenda and then we'll take a vote and consider it, first read, second read on an ordinance to approve rezoning if that's what you all want to do. If the recommendation from the planning commission is to deny, you take a vote to deny it and that's a final vote. You don't disapprove of rezoning by ordinance, it's disapproved by a simple vote. So if anybody here would like to take up one of these matters, now that we have here, if anybody, any of the council wants to take up one or all of these, now's the time to speak up. If not, we'll let those go and they'll become final within 21 days of that action of the planning commission.
Thank you, Tim.
Did you repeat that?
Unless anybody.
In summary?
He's looked pretty much normal.
One of his.
Congratulations. Does anybody else has anything they want to take up or does that the commission's decision stand? Okay, thank you, Tim. Next order of business is council comments. Anyone in the council have anything they want to bring before the meeting today? Okay, seeing none. Raymond, you want to bring me that probably? This is sort of, thank you, this is sort of a last minute thing that Deputy Sheriff Brandon, Brian had asked me about, that there's a, been proposed memorial for the fallen officers here in Nelson County that they've been raising money for and the sheriff's department has asked this fiscal court as well as the city council and the mayor's office to consider a contribution. They've already raised over $9,000 on this.
That's correct. And fiscal court donated the asking portion.
Right. It was $2,788. Fiscal court approved that this morning. So I would make a recommendation that we support this. It's going to recognize the five fallen officers plus the two K-9 dogs that have fallen in the line of fire. And it'll be, I guess, put up out at the Sheriff and Police Department.
If you're facing the sheriff's office, there's a little island off to the left and it'll be redone with the memorial being at the center.
And both the councils contingency fund, the mayor's contingency fund has money there available. If we wanted to split that between the two contingency funds, that'd be less than $1,400 of the council's fund and $1,400 on the mayor's fund. So if you all are in favor of that, I would recommend, ask for a motion to approve the contribution of $2,788 towards this memorial for the fallen officers.
Mayor, if we, if I make that motion, that includes your money as well?
Hey, if we, if I make that motion, that includes your money as well?
Yes, it can.
Okay. So, I'll make that motion then.
Mark the second, Mayor.
The motion and second, any other discussion? Thanks, Deputy Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Well, you might want Buckman to carry that.
I'm just thanking him.
Oh, okay. He's gone, y'all don't know him.
I have a motion. He got this here on really, really short notice.
I was on a call, I was supposed to be here at 5:00 before y'all got started.
Yeah, that was part of the discussion. We have a motion and a second, any, all in favor, the secretary of office saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The only other thing I've got to before, I think most of you have probably forgotten, they press released an email today that they've selected a new executive director for tourism like Magic, and I was at, had breakfast with him last Friday, and was able to meet with him and talk about, you know, some of the things going on here. Of course, tourism is growing like crazy, and he's got a really strong background, both in tourism and investor development, which is really a nice, I think, compliment to each other in this position. So, he's been in Frankfurt for a number of years, and he's been held offices and head of tourism in Frankfurt, also the head of the Economic Development Association here in the States. He was well-vetted, and they had outside professional firm, Oliver, who helped us and assisted in getting the applicants to submit, and then also they had a selection committee, like we've done, some of our vacancies, to make this appointment. So, I think he'll be a great addition to our tourist commission. Okay, then we have, get this back up. We have one cemetery deed, Prentice Calvert, we do that by unanimous consent. Then we have two reappointments. One would be for Kevin Smith, from the tourist commission, a three-year term, which will expire December 31, 2020, and then the reappointment of West Parish to the Development Board, three-year term expiring January 1, 2021. I'd ask for a motion then to approve both of those reappointments.
So, motion by Councilman Shekels.
Thank you. Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion?
And if somebody's got a particular problem with one of you guys, you can split them up, but I don't see a reason you can't take them together, if there's none.
Have a motion then and a second. All in favor, the secretary of office saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, and the finance, we've got a resolution. Once we got notified of this major increase to our pension requirements, Tracy Hudson and I started trying to think of ways that we could not spend some of the unrestricted reserves that are in our general fund, because that's, you know, the fund that doesn't get a lot of revenue in it. And so, we had budgeted $119,000 this year for air packs for the fire department, and $111,000 would have been carried over in the next budget year, I told them, for $230,000 for these air packs. So, rather than spend the cash, we bid this out for a three-year loan, and I'll let Tracy speak to that. So, we had all the local banks, we bid out funding for this $230,000 expenditure, and we'll pay back in three years rather than two, which is going to protect some of these unrestricted reserves that we think we're going to need when we come around to our next budget. So, Tracy, would you speak to, I don't have anything as far as, I know West Banko was a low bidder on the rate.
We've bid all the local banks here in Barstown. West Banko came in the lowest at 3.38% over three years. So, the resolution is needed in order to give the mayor the okay to expand the loan documents.
Don't necessarily need to read it, I can summarize, Mayor, that the, what this does is it creates a general obligation pledge. In other words, the city is pledging that out of its general revenue, full faith and credit revenue, the city, it's pledged to make prompt payment, you know, that the, this is going to be 95%, at least 95% of what there, you are expending will be for local government activities, and that it's designating the lease as a qualified tax-exempt obligation. It's a, allows them to bid a lower rate because it's a tax-exempt income to them through you all, and we are doing that under a particular section of the Internal Revenue Code, and so that if someone wants to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented, you can do that.
Can we get a motion to adopt this resolution?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the resolution number 2018-02, approving a master lease purchase agreement with West Banko Bank for the purchase of the SCBA units for the Barstown Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, with Councilman Shekels. Any discussion? All in favor, the secretary of office saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And then personnel, I think Greg and Chief Pressing are here.
Yes, Mayor, just to let the council know, last Thursday, we swore in a new police officer. He's a 22-year veteran out of LMPPD, he was a sergeant, retired from LMPPD as a sergeant. His name is Matthew Glass. He had some experience in patrol, investigations, and dignitary protection while he was at LMPPD. He was sworn in last Thursday.
He'll just be a regular officer.
Regular officer, yes.
I don't think we have any other personnel announcements. So, that being said, we will, I mean, motion made to go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sales of real property by a public agency, when publicity would be likely to affect the value of the property. I mean, a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Mayor.
A motion by Councilman Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilman Buckman. Any discussion? All in favor, the secretary of office saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You'd be adjourned into executive session. Need to come out of executive session?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, if you feel stuff, okay? Come out of executive session.
Just going to re- make a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilman Copeland, any discussion? All in favor, the secretary of office saying aye?
Aye.
Let the record show that there was no official action taken during the executive session, just strictly discussion, and there are no motions to be brought before the council after adjournment, so, of the executive session, so I'll ask for a motion then to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion for Councilman Williams, second with Councilman Buckman. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned, thank you all, just going to add extra time.
Yeah, I tried to tell Randy and Terry, we all, we all.